Sorry to interrupt, but I didn't, we're not getting any sound on our end.
Well, it helps if I turn the mic off.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thanks. Prove the promotion of Reese, uh, I don't know how to pronounce this, Penney?
Penney?
Penney? General Assistant in the Treasury Office effective July first, twenty twenty five, annual salary of forty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Wait, motion?
Second.
Okay. Approved their promotion of Pam Bascom to Motor Vehicle Deputy Treasurer's Office effective July first, twenty twenty five, annual salary fifty-five thousand twenty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents.
Wait, motion?
Second.
Okay. Next, place on file, the following manure and management plans, WB Farms Incorporated, Orontownship, section twenty-six, Schmitz Farms, Summertonship, section twenty, Kevin Passick, Buffalo Township, section twenty-one.
Second.
Favor?
Okay.
Next discussion on water trail grant. I guess that's you.
Sure, uh, the water trail grant is a grant that's funded by, at the state level, um, typically deals with this and, and has the processes for that. Um, are they in the call at this point or?
Uh, yeah, I have.
Is Isaiah here?
Yeah, you have Isaiah and I have Vincent, uh, in my office and the, uh, Nick on the call as well.
Yeah, would you mind describing this a little bit for us? We're just having a conversation of letting this out to the public.
Yep, so, uh, we met, um, a couple of months ago, um, with Ben Bonner at, uh, the Conservation Office and talked a little bit about water trails, what that would mean and how we could move forward. Um, so the water trails process, it, it basically starts with, uh, an application with Iowa D N R. Um, it's, it's one of those rare opportunities in which it's, it's fully funded by the state. Um, so the state has done probably seven or eight water trails at this point, and we actually in our region did our first, we did the very first one, um, in Black Hawk County along the Cedar. And so generally, um, what it requires and, and what they really want to see is support from the Conservation Office, support from the Board of Supervisors, and then probably most importantly, support from the landowners adjacent to the river. And so, um, it really starts with that support. Um, the way the process looks is we, it's a competitive application, so, um, on behalf of the county, we would submit the application to D N R. Uh, D N R, um, the way that they don't look at the applications until probably November, December, and then they award in January. Um, and then you really kind of don't get started until a couple of months after. Uh, they spend a significant amount of their time on the front end, um, just sending out surveys to landowners, um, to get some feedback on if they're supportive of this. And, um, and so what the water trails really comes down to is it supports obviously recreational use of the, of the river, um, promotes environmental stewardship in and around the river. And then it also brings, um, that economic and tourism benefit. And so throughout the process, the process kind of varies by county. Um, at the end of the day, you, you get a plan, um, but that plan includes, um, some field work, some route mapping along the river, um, a lot of public engagement and workshops go into this. Um, because obviously there's so many landowners and so many stakeholders involved when it comes to the river. So you think about your cities, your landowners, your users, um, tourism. Um, so a lot of, uh, public engagement on that end. Um, and the plan also includes, um, some probably like ten thousand foot, um, engineering in terms of planning various projects that could be developed or, uh, should be developed along the river. And so it kind of identifies those projects and gives you a general idea of kind of what they would look like and, um, um, not, not a good cost estimate, but a cost estimate. Uh, to kind of get you generally in the idea of what those projects would look like. Um, and so what it requires is, um, you know, agreements with landowners, um, some of that infrastructure development and education. And, um, at the end of the day, uh, it also thinks about kind of use in terms of signage and what signage is in and around the river. Um, so at the end of the day, you, you get a bunch of signage along the river showing acts, various access points, danger areas. Um, and so those get put up and then, uh, you get designated by the state. And so like I said, there's about seven or eight, um, water trails that are designated. Usually, uh, Iowa D N R kind of does it by county and river. Some, some are a little bigger. Um, and some are, are a little bit more focused. And so I think this is, uh, it's a really good step in terms of promoting the use of the river, um, increasing stewardship and then giving you some opportunities to, to think about what, um, what amenities could go around. And so, uh, what I really like about this, and we've done it successfully in Blackhawk, is it engages those landowners, which I think is probably the, the most important and valuable piece. Uh, so a lot of it, it is, it comes through that input. Um, so really in terms of the next steps, it would be a lettuce, letter of support, um, from the Board of Supervisors, and then we would start working with Ben on developing and submitting that application. So that way the D N R can kind of do some of that preliminary work in terms of outreach to, uh, the landowners. And then, like I said, it would kind of fall in that timeline like I, I previously mentioned. Um, Nick, do you have anything that you want to add?
Um, no, that, that was good, Isaiah. I just add a couple more things. Um, so I think the Wopsey Pinniken is already technically designated as a water trail, um, which does mean that it would score higher in the development of a plan. At this point, uh, the designation doesn't really hold uh, a great, I mean, it, you know, it is, it is a, a kind of a unique, um, factor in having that trail designated. But the plan is really what gives you the, uh, framework to kind of further, uh, you know, establish what, uh, what the county would like to see um, as a result of that designation, you know, like Isaiah said, you know, you can, you can focus in on areas that uh, you would like to see more accommodations, um, and then also involving the various jurisdictions in, uh, kind of having agreements upon, um, you know, important things like, uh, 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 schedule of, of, uh, of trash pickup, um, at some of those more frequently used locations so that they don't get inundated, um, you know, identifying some of the safety concerns, uh, preparing, uh, you know, a little bit of, uh, uh, kind of a more, um, um, comprehensive approach, uh, with, with emergency, emergency response and first responders and, and, um, the local officials that, that, uh, are, are tasked with making sure that everybody stays safe on the river, you know, and, um, and then, uh, to with the public, uh, you know, I think the public awareness piece, um, and helping everyone, I, you know, kind of have a better understanding of what, um, your responsibilities are when you're using the river for, for, uh, for recreation or, or, you know, whatever you may be using the river for, um, so that, you know, everybody kind of has, um, uh, good, a good understanding and a good relationship because, uh, you know, I think some of the concerns for individuals are, um, you know, with tourism and attraction, um, you know, there still are those, those property owners who, who, uh, who that sort of thing concerns, um, and then, you know, kind of just, uh, an overall, uh, I think kind of a, oh, you could probably call it a, uh, a documentation or, or kind of a study on what some of those, um, potential risks may be, you know, I mean, I think there are areas, um, on any river, um, that, that may, uh, you know, there may be a line of barbed wire fence going across or, or electric fence or things like that and, and working to make sure that those are either um, identified, um, or, or mitigated. Um, and then what we did actually with, uh, the Cedar River Trail is created a, uh, a, um, um, a map, um, uh, what's the word I'm looking for, a, uh, oh, interactive map. So it's on, it's, it's housed by a website and it, uh, you know, it, it gives people the opportunity to be able to go and look at the website, um, with, with real time updates to, uh, you know, flooding or, or for instance, if there were a, a portion of the river that was um, had some kind of, uh, of a, of a blockage or, or, you know, there could be, um, um, you know, log jams or, or construction on the dam that would, that would require them to uh, want to avoid those areas, shows portage areas and things like that, but, um, that's, that's really, I think, kind of the, the basis for it all. Um, getting a pretty good historical um, documentation of, of the river too is, is, is kind of a cool thing, um, understanding, you know, some of those pieces also. Uh, bringing that to the public kind of helps, uh, take a little, a little, a little bit of extra pride in some of those things, I think, sometimes, but, um, you know, that's kind of the gist of it.
Well, thanks, uh, and here in this area, we have the Wopse Pinniken Watership Group, so we'd ask for their support, I guess, in the process too.
I'm just curious if we had any conversation with them.
Not, not as far as I know.
Why would that be?
We're just now at the actions, action state.
Yeah, and this is really, I would say this is informative as much as it is anything, um, you know, I mean.
Ben, you want to come up, please?
Initial conversation with Ben, um, Ben Bonner and, um, we kind of left it there. I, you know, I guess I can't say for sure that 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 may have not been, that, that may not have been discussed at, uh, you know, some of the the, kind of, concerned board meetings. Go ahead.
All right, so I'm gonna, we just recently found out that some nine one one funds are going to be cut because the state has chose to not pay for a certain program. So they're going to take nine one one funding away from us, about twenty-five thousand this year. But yet they're going to open up a grant for a, a study.
This has been a, it's been around for a decade. I mean.
Then none of the projects are going to be paid for. It's just getting, getting public input, am I correct?
If, if you want to see it, the guys did provide me the plan that Blackhawk County got, so I thought that'd give you the opportunity.
I mean, being realist, being realistic, knowing all the hours are going to be spent into a plan that's this big and then not having any of this, any of the things paid for and knowing what our funding looks like, it doesn't seem like it's even a viable option.
What do you, what do you mean by not having any of the things paid for?
The only thing that's going to be paid for is a plan, correct? But nothing inside.
The funding for the water trail is, has been consecutive for, like I said, for a decade now and that, you know, uh, there's no indication from our end that none of, none of that remains. And then there are still water fund, trail funds that go to implementation of various elements of the plan.
How much the implementation gets paid for?
Uh, I think it's up, it's typically five hundred thousand dollars a year, so.
For a watershed?
There's a water recreation access and it's a cost share program that D N R does, um.
Yeah, so it's. And identify, you know, I mean, I think too, Don, to that, to that extent there, you know, I mean, if there are, if there are emergency aspects that were to come up in this plan, um, that could be a mechanism to say, look, we do have these issues that need to be addressed, you know, I mean, unless, you know, the more, I think the more resources you have that have identified some of the challenges that you have, whether they relate to the water trail specifically or not, you can then take those to the various networks, for instance, nine one one, and say, look, this is identified as a problem. Um, you know, I mean, it's not just coming from.
So I think we're apples and oranges. That nine one one funding and the water trails funding are different.
But it all comes out of the same bucket. It all comes from the state. Is that not correct?
Oh, they're allotted, they're, they're put-ins a lot as far as how much the, the state will, will pay for water trails and then separately, how much.
Okay, so if, if I'm at the state level and I'm looking at this, what do people need more? Do they need somebody to come up, pick, come and pick them up off the ground when they fall down? Or when they have a heart attack?
Clearly, they made that decision that they didn't because this is the, but this is the state budget. So they, somebody at the state level decided that this is what they were going to keep and not what they were going to keep. We're not here to argue that point. We're here to say that this is funding that's available for this plan. Whether you want it or not, because nine one one funding isn't there, doesn't really matter for this conversation. So that's kind of where we can leave it.
What's going to happen next year though? Like I see what they're doing every year and every year they keep chicken, shipping away at our budget. So what's going to happen next year? You know, we get all the, we get all these stakeholders that buy into this program and then all of a sudden as a county, we say, well, I'm sorry, we don't have the funding to do any of these projects that you guys want.
Having a plan ready when, when the, the time is right is the most important part of it. Whether that happens next year or in five years, if you don't have a plan ready, you don't have anything to base anything off of.
Another, another argument is that, uh, this area that we have in the Wopse Pinniken from, uh, the old, what we call the old iron bridge down to Kwaski has always been in the top two, top three, uh, uh, traveled waterways, uh, throughout the state for several years running. You see that it's usually between us and the, the Wopse Pinniken near, uh, near, uh, uh, what's the town? Uh, down by, um.
Anheuser and McCollcata and yep.
Yeah, I think, um, so we're typically in the top two, three as far as populations go. So if there was a, a better suited place, there's only one or two places that, uh, would be better suited for it.
How much did Interco get to, to do this?
We haven't moved the budget yet.
So they, do you guys typically manage it at Interco? Do you manage this project?
Yeah, so that's one of the things. Yeah, we, we would be responsible for pre- preparing it. Uh, John at D N R, he's the program manager. Um, but he oversees basically everything with the river program. They have a staff of three. Um, so he's got kind of a wide variety. So he, he typically relies on staffing through COGS um, to implement, uh, and administer the program. Um, so we would be the main, uh, contact and administer of the plan. And Dawn, I, you know, I understand your frustrations with, with state funding and obviously, um, you know, some things get cut, some don't, and that's not really upon us. We don't make those decisions. Um, but uh, re- regardless, I think, um, you know, this plan does help drive a need, um, and it also does increase tourism. So in terms of economic benefits, I do think there's, uh, a lot of potential in terms of economic development. We've seen a lot of these trails get developed. Um, and increased use and, and travel to, to various rivers and, and counties. And so I, I do think there's in terms of benefit, there's some benefit, um, and along those lines of what Nick said, you know, we can never guarantee or, or know what funding's going to be available in the future. And so this, this is a, a plan that helps set you up for if funding becomes available, um, or when funding becomes available. And so um, it, it's really about planning for the future, um, and, and putting yourself on the right foot, uh, when and if that time does happen. And, you know, some of these projects, they come to fruition, um, some of them don't. A- and that's just kind of, obviously that just ebbs and flows depending on what's available and, and what's accessible in terms of funding locally at the state level and even sometimes at the federal level, so.
Lisa, did we?
Yeah, I was just going to say, this would be run kind of like, um, when we did the housing study for the county, we lead, uh, in the Interco. Um, they, uh, they took care of doing all the survey work. They took care of putting it all together. Um, and it's one of those cases, you have to have that housing study to receive grants. I know Jessup, uh, when they did, uh, Echo Development did their workforce housing, they used our housing study. Um, it's just, and they received the grant for workforce housing. So it's just an opportunity that you have to have something like this in order to be eligible for those grants. And this is just a proactive move, um, as, as a form of economic development and tourism for the county.
I'm sorry, these studies just push me because it seems like nothing ever comes out of them. And the money for the studies are paid for by the D N R by someplace, somebody else, but the money for the project are always either a matching grant or else we have to come up with them for ourselves. So I guess I just see them sometimes as a waste of time.
Just as a comment, if I'm chairman of the Upper Wopsey Watershed and the amount of traffic on the Wopse Pinniken River, especially from anywhere from Littleton all the way down to Kwaski, and it is a terrific benefit. Uh, and safety and signing and everything on the water trail would be amazing. Uh, I'm fully in support of it. I just think, um, number one, I would like Ben to, or whoever's driving this is to reach out to the watershed, uh, talk with, uh, uh, Northeast Iowa C and D, who is our, uh, watershed coordinator.
Mm-hmm.
And see what either assistance they can give or suggestions they might have because I'm sure they would have a wealth of information also.
Hey, I, I think that's a great point, John. Um, and as we kind of move through these steps, um, the engagement will increase because obviously we all know, um, the river is, uh, is one of those valuable natural resources that can be a blessing and a curse at the same time. Um, and it has a lot of stakeholders that are involved, um, through the process. And so obviously I think the watershed's a, a great valuable resource and, and one of those extremely valuable stakeholders in the process.
I remember as a child, I would swim over next to the mill and, I mean, you couldn't park within three blocks of the river. So it was real busy then. I don't know why it's not so busy now.
Swim next to the dam?
Yeah.
Were you a pool?
Real good swimmer.
I grew up in Kwaski. We didn't swim next to that dam. People went over the dam and died.
Yeah, well.
Yeah.
I fell above the, the mill.
I will say too, we did discuss this at our, it's been a couple Conservation Board meetings ago on the board. At least at that meeting was in favor of pursuing this. If you guys are interested in pursuing it as well. I don't want to speak for them now, but, uh, yeah, I, to Lisa's point, you know, I, I do think that this is a unique opportunity. I mean, it's pretty rare that we don't have to put any funding into it, um, and Interco is willing to facilitate most of the process. So as far as like our time involved with it, other than going to the uh, community events and stuff like that, I think is going to be relatively small compared to some other grant programs. Um, but yeah, and, and I, if we were to pursue any of the projects that they come up with, um, that is key because all the grants that I've written, they ask like, you know, how this project fits into whatever county or state planning that you've done. So it does really help out a lot in that regard.
I can see for economic development, everything, the amount of, uh, people that would utilize the trail, would also utilize a lot of the dairy businesses. And it could be a boon even like Kwaski and restaurants down there and that type of thing. It's, uh, whether it's gas provisions or whatever it might be, they're all going to benefit from it. I think it'd be a great thing. I mean, you can drive by, uh, Knott's Landing, which is by Dairy Queen, where there's a natural put-in place right now. And on any given weekend day, you'll see twenty to thirty kayaks or canoes down there looking out. Uh, especially when the water's higher like this. It's tremendous usage and, uh, if we can enhance that, I think that's a great idea.
Another asset that you brought back that I, I didn't think about, thanks for bringing it up, Nick, is the interactive flooding maps. I, I never considered that. That's a heck of an idea. I don't know if we had it, but that kind of lets people know not to show up if, uh, there's already flooding events going on.
Yeah, and, and to, uh, to the chairman's, uh, point too, the safety signage is really, is really a strong, uh, you know, proponent to making sure that people are using it, um, you know, freely, yeah.
Yep, I, you know, and I will say, you know, there's a county being sued because of one of their signs was covered up by trees and no one could see it. And that's where accidents happen. And, and so it helps, you know, with that liability too as well from the county's standpoint.
Realistically, I'm going to throw this out there because I've been on, like, when I was on Jessup's, um. Like their city planning thing. The very first, everybody showed up, like we had room for people. And then as the meetings went on, there was like maybe a handful of us left. Maybe. So just throwing that out there.
I sit on a bunch of boards and committees with Interco and I mean, that's pretty much. I don't know, about half of what we do, I guess forty percent of what we do is making sure we have plans together to be able to. Establish these uh, transportation uh routes throughout the, the region. So.
Well, where's beginning is because we definitely need to have transportation.
Oh, yeah.
For elderly people.
They're the ones who are funding or uh, I think that's the Jessup Project North, uh, the Blacktop Project, excuse me, the. The paving project north of Jessup that's coming up here is one of them. Um, and all those.
Talking about you putting cement down.
All that stuff, yeah.
I was talking about getting people from point A to point B. Two different things.
Uh, so another thing that actually Nick heads up is the, the transportation in transit.
I know Nick heads up.
Okay, so.
And he does a good job.
Yeah, so I wanna get people from point A to point B. Interco is part of that too. So they, they got a real good reputation, a real good history of doing all this stuff.
And it's always a challenge getting people to all the meetings. I mean, it just, I don't know, for whatever reason. Interest, you know, I mean, people get busy, interest gets lost, that, you know, I, I. If you can find the silver bullet for that one, I'm, I'm all ears. Well, I appreciate you guys taking the time to, to listen and, and uh, by no means are we looking for uh, for uh. You know, a decision right in this very moment, but it kind of gives us uh. You know, I think a path forward to, to kind of further to the discussion and um. And um, you know, work towards, towards that point when we're ready to, to hopefully proceed. So um. You know, feel free to reach out to us with any questions. Um, you know, obviously Ben is, is right there too. Um, for you guys as a resource. So um, you know, we're happy to help out in any way that we can.
Thanks, Al.
The uh, the one thing I was gonna ask you guys quick too was, as far as like proceeding with the process. Did that need to go through the conservation board first or the board of supervisors? I couldn't remember from.
What, what I would prefer to do is. Uh, have the supervisors offer support to the concept of the project. And conservation board can weigh in on it at that point. Forward.
Go ahead.
Sorry, yeah. So the next steps, um, as part of the application, we need either a resolution or a letter of support or minutes. Um, showing support for the project. Um, then at that point, Ben, we would uh, start moving forward with the application process through. Probably through you and, and your board as well.
I'll make the motion that we put together, uh, or we uh, put together a letter of support for Interco to put together this water trail plan.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, I have a roll call, please.
Good, hi.
Cleveland, hi.
We'll go up steam.
Okay, so I will sign a.
Thanks, Al.
Letter of support for proceeding with the grant study and application process.
I, I'd be happy to write up a draft. If you wanna save your time, John, or you can write up a draft, it's up to you.
If you would like to do that and forward it to us, that'd be great.
Will do. Thanks, John. Thanks, Keith. And I appreciate your support. Um, and Dawn, I understand your concerns and. I understand that it's frustrating at times. Um, but if you have any questions or uh, wanna have another conversation about this, happy to do so.
Yeah, I'll call you later.
Yep, bye.
Thanks.
Thanks, Al.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, the Stanley County Line Road project.
I've, I've seen that.
Thanks.
Thanks, Ben, yep. Okay.
Uh, Alex, uh, you guys wanna jump in?
Fine.
Welcome.
Morning.
We got some uh, some issues up on that county line road, right?
Yep.
Yep. What kind of leave a thing with?
It's, it's where it is. It's a, it's frost oil issue with blacktop. The only way to fix that is you're gonna take that blacktop off. The way we fixed them in the past is we take just where the frost oil is, we just basically core out the center of the road. Fill it full of heavy rock, put a French drain, just dump it in the ditch where we can. And it just seems to take care of that frost oil issue. That's what we wanna do there. Uh, we'll take that blacktop off. We'll core that, put two inch rock in it, and then just resurface over the top.
And they said something about re-grinding the blacktop and possibly using that as fill also.
Or that. It just, I think we spent so much time trying to mix that back in and get them chunks broke up. Hey, just be quicker just to remove it.
Okay.
You ain't really removing any rock. You're gonna have to put the rock back on anyway, so.
Probably got someplace you could put it, I guess.
What's that?
You probably got someplace you could put it in there.
Yeah, yeah, we can get rid of that. That's not an issue. And then just, I don't know, Brian gave you this paper that had, he had some figures on it. Some of that stuff we will use the report type roller. We really don't need that, because we've done these other roads. We just did a hundred and ninety street north of Windsor. North and east of Windsor this spring. We just courted, filled it in, lighted it. We could probably do it. I would say two days. I'm gonna try and discuss, I think, this more hours than one. And I talked to Brian about that, because he probably figured before I talked to him, after we looked at it. I think a couple of days will do it. So if you took them figures cut in half, at the most, it'd be the most difficult.
We're looking at, you know, fifty percent cost here.
This is on the county line road too. So do we have jurisdiction for this section road? Or do we split it with Fayette County? Or how's that shape out?
This portion, we have jurisdiction, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it'd be on us and, and Stanley.
Are you sure it's not fifty fifty with the fair? I was gonna call.
If it's about the Stanley, I'd be calling on that one.
Well, that was what I was gonna do was see what you guys and them, yeah, I, I was gonna go.
We played a piece. This portion is our portion.
Okay.
Which we've always maintained before, so. You know, I just, it was just fifty percent of us.
I, I just, if I could get, yeah, if I, I, I'll go ahead and talk to Fayette County and see if they'll kick in on it. You know, whatever we can do, yeah.
Sometimes that's spelled out in the twenty eighty agreement. It depends, it's just a section of the road that belongs to one county and not the other. Other times they split it down the middle. So it just depends on the agreement.
Yeah.
I apologize, I should have looked at that ahead of time, but.
And I'm sorry, you know, and then which, you know, when they did the surfacing, was it, it was, yeah. It went fifty fifty, then it ended up, then it was Stanley worked with you, you know, and so. They, they took, they paid the north. So I mean, yeah, they really should, you know, reach out and talk to grindstone. And by now.
Yes.
What did you, um. So where you would have that caught, you're thinking?
Well, with this, is this one, Brian's on this.
Yeah, I've got.
He, he had uh, a total of fifteen thousand.
Yeah, that's where I.
Shoot it up here.
Just that there, but you think you could hit?
I, I'm, I'm.
You're pretty sure you can cut that down a little bit.
Yeah, you could probably take that, yeah, down to about, about five, five, six thousand would cover that cost easy enough.
I, out of our budget, that's chump change.
Yeah, I mean, that's what it would be out of our, I mean, that's the total cost. If it was. You guys, I don't know if you were paying any of that or how they, or we just did that.
Well, and, and the other, the other option, Brian, so that is sometimes. You guys will provide the equipment. We had to buy them.
The materials, which would be the rock.
Okay.
So he's now, whatever he's got in the rock here, he's got like twenty eight hundred dollars of materials.
So I did get a uh, text from Brian. He just asked the question, do we need twenty eighty on that? I would imagine.
That's what I'm trying to research now, so I'll, I'll validate that too.
Can we just move ahead with the project? It's only like seven thousand dollars.
Then ask them after the fact if they wanna kick in too, so I might.
What we have in the area.
Well, uh, uh, you know, and that's where we got our council meeting on Monday. And that was, the problem is, is like I said, we spent so much and then we ended up, we had to come up with fourteen thousand. We got free interest. From, for five years through Fayette County to get what we got done now. And then we're, we're tapped. And then now we've got this, this problem that, and that's where we're like, just turn it into gravel, you know, the farmer and stuff like that. So that's where I reached out to Brian. That's where, yeah, we all got together and get this. And I haven't, I need to, I, I should call, yeah, I need to call Joe, uh. Fayette County Super, yeah, and, and see if, you know. I know Brian had talked to him while we were there looking at it, but. Yeah, and I should, I.
I'm assuming Brian would have known if it was.
I'm sure we could do that.
Fayette County, he would have said something.
Okay. He's so. Basically, what would the city have?
Well, sounds like we already have support to uh, to do the project at our, at our costs. And then if you find that uh.
I mean.
Fayette County or.
And how is Stanley's finances right now? You need to do half of it?
Pretty worth it. But, and that's the thing is it's, it's just like. I guess what we're trying to find out is what this will cost us, you know. The city of Stanley, I mean, it's just, yeah.
If we go by what Alex and I talked about, it might cost you twenty five.
Twenty five hundred dollars.
If we, we could do it for five thousand, I'm sure.
Okay, and then like I said, I, I will bring it up Monday at the council meeting. Uh, yeah. It, it, you know, I guess basically seeing what you guys would do for us and then we'll.
And I think we're stuck with the maintenance of the roads on the smaller towns anyway.
I mean, we, yeah, we maintain, but it's two hundred foot stretch. It's uh.
I think.
Pretty much on age town.
Yeah. Just looking at the scope of the project, I think we, go ahead. I would like a motion, we would may have, move ahead with the project.
Second.
Is that with the county? The whole amount?
Yes.
And like I say, I'll reach out to Fayette County and see if they'll even kick in or help you guys, you know. Yes, I thank you very much.
Yeah.
And then you won't do it till like August first or something? You could do it whenever you want us to do. Well, we've got the rag guy coming through on the twenty sixth and so. But I'd like to have it before the farming, you know, before the season starts, so. And I mean, whatever it takes you. I mean, even if it is a couple of days you guys want to. I'm very.
I got guys that could have do it right now if you wanted to do it right now.
Well, that'd be, yeah.
Cause we're just finishing the project in Brandon, the salt shit Brandon, we're just finishing that project up. I could have them go right there and do that.
Might help.
That just done before break, right?
Right.
We did that part of the road fixed.
So we've got, let's see, motion, second, uh, own favor. We will call on that.
Well, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, guys. Okay, decal, decal on the county car.
That's a mess.
Yeah.
Um. So the fusion that is up for bid. I asked Cory Hartman to go out and I think you could take the decal out, cause he does a lot of the, he strikes all the sheriff squads. That decal is currently still sunbaked on. He cannot get it to come off. Without basically a lot of work. Like with the buffer and the Gugon. I did reach out to Alan at Hilltop. And he suggested maybe talking to signs and more, because this is a lot of what they do. So I guess it's kind of up to the board of supervisors. Do we want to proceed to find somebody to hopefully get these decals off this car in the next week? Or do you wanna sell it as is? And leave it up to whoever buys it?
I would prefer that we get it removed. That's.
Yeah, I think that's our responsibility.
I don't have any idea what the cost may be.
Do we have any bids on that yet?
Two. We've had two bids and then I have, I've had someone reach out several times. Actually, they even reached out this weekend. They were looking for it. But I think it might be in the shop from where Cory was working on it, possibly.
Oh.
So if we remove this, we don't know what the cost is, and then we get less money out of the car than what it costs us to remove this, and we're.
I'm gonna guess it's gonna cost at least two to three hundred dollars to remove it possibly.
That's terrible.
These can cost more because I bet we end up having to take that paint off. My thoughts. If it's that sun baked on, you're gonna get down into the paint.
Well, that's why Cory quit on it, because he didn't wanna get into the clear coat.
Right.
But he doesn't have the materials, the buffer and the Gugon to work on it. Alan did say that he could try it with that. But he's never done it that, or never had to do something like this, and that's why he suggested talking to signs and more.
John, you're the car enthusiast.
I. I'd say let's go with signs and more and see if they can do it. Cause otherwise you're gonna be sanding it down and recoating it. With clear coat on it, and then it gets really expensive.
Seems right.
So basically, if someone reach out to signs and more to see if they can do it, and if it's not that expensive to get it done this week. If not, you're gonna sell it as is. Cause it is Monday.
I would say that. I would make that motion.
Can someone do that? Because I leave for Des Moines tomorrow.
Second, um, I can drive over tomorrow, probably.
Okay, I would start with maybe just giving them a call and seeing if they can.
Sure.
Set it up and look at it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, next garbage disposal at the senior center.
Oh, yeah, so the big, the main garbage disposal. It's at the, right next to the commercial dishwasher. It finally took the final last raw. It's been repaired a couple of times. Oh, yeah, we, we've hit it with hammers. We have replaced seals in that thing and I think it's just a butter now.
Is it, did you try the reset button on the bottom?
Yeah, it just, it makes the most verbal god awful.
There's something down lodged into it?
No.
But I do, like chicken bone or something.
Ish.
Okay, well, looks like we've done enough.
We have a full room.
It's probably gonna cost about three thousand.
What?
Is it, is it something that, I mean, is it, how much use does it get, I guess?
It gets used daily.
Okay.
So. Yeah.
Any idea how old it is? Kind of conversation?
It's probably from nineteen eighties to when they first put the kitchen in.
Sounds like the cost of ownership of a building to me.
Three thousand dollars, it's all high for garbage. We don't have any bids or anything on it.
It's commercial grade.
We better put some good down or something again.
I would think.
Well, you're gonna have to get some quotes, um. For our fuel map policy, you do not have to advertise for bid, only over five thousand. If it comes in over five thousand, then you'll have to turn on an advertiser.
Okay.
I would suggest. Reaching out to our three big local plumbing firms, whether it's Johnson and Precision and. Independence Plumbing, so you can get quote on what it would cost to replace it. Commercial grade. Garbage disposal before we make a final decision.
Okay.
Indy and who else, John?
Johnson Plumbing and Precision. Big, those are the three big ones. That would get at least some ideas.
Alright, will do.
Can I have that in a form of a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we uh, uh, obtained bids for the commercial grade garbage disposal at the senior center.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, thank you. Okay, next we get to talk with Julie again about the potential employees to ability access point.
Just like a standing uh, reservation we kept.
Yeah.
Me as well. How you holding up?
I'm doing good. I took the weekend, uh, my son's home, so that was, that was good.
Oh, good.
Yeah. Okay, so the situation we're in, um. If you, yeah. All you can do down is laugh. Um. Trying to get the background here. So what was decided with the disability access point because of how quickly it occurred is that. Counties would maintain employment for a year, and then we would go toward a county, single county of employer. It was approved by the governing board. It was. It was approved by the governing board. It was discussed. All employees were told that was the way it was happening, but. Apparently there was not a lot of communication with the county boards about that, and this was before my time in this. So I spent most of last week visiting county boards, um, and the week before, and, um. At this point. We've got. Three. Counties that have approved. I think Dubuque, I'm doing their board after ours. I think they will maybe come up with their own MOU and approve it. Johnson County sounds like is going to approve it, but they have changed the MOU. Benton County, I'm visiting again tomorrow to see if they will approve it. Last week, Jones County denied signing the MOU. So, um.
May I interrupt on the Benton County? The lawyers were concerned and they might do some rewriting is what they said last Tuesday.
Yep.
So I like their warrant, but. The lawyers want, there's a couple of things that they just wanna make sure doesn't make them liable for something they shouldn't be, so.
And that's kind of what we're finding. I have not gone to the Benton County one yet. Deb Guard covered that one, but I will be covering it tomorrow. Um, Jones County chose not to sign it. Uh, because they are withdrawing from the MOU. They could have signed the. I'm sorry, they're withdrawing from the twenty eighty. Which. There is a provision because the MOU does not say you have to be a member of the twenty eighty. But their attorney recommended to them that since they're withdrawing from the twenty eighty. They not sign the MOU. Which leaves, um. Three staff. Orphans right now. Um, I was talking to Dawn about it and she suggested we look at whether or not that's something that Buchanan County could pick up those three staff. Um. With the disability access point, um, funding them. So I talked with. Ashley. And, um. Discussed if we were to do it, how would that work? Um, she emailed Sean. Sean suggested that there might be a way to do a contract between our board and the Jones Board to transfer those employees here. I don't know the. The process of that. I mean, we have a week. Before they're, they've already gotten their layoff notices. I agree. That's the way I've been feeling the last month is that we just, there's, there's not time. Um, otherwise those employees will be laid off. Um, Lynn County is hiring new employees. They might potentially agree. I think they would potentially agree to hire the three. The concern there is that Lynn County is hiring everybody as new employees. Um, because of the union, they don't have the ability to look at the fact that. Two of the employees have been over twenty five years, I think, with the county and providing the services. Lynn County definitely for the disability access navigators would have to bring them in at starting pay. Excuse me, which would be a very significant decrease in pay for. I don't think we would keep the navigators. The, um. The individual cell of the three staff, there's a full-time disability service navigator, a part-time navigator, and then. A program coordinator for the southern counties. So that person is like directly under me, well, under the COO. Overseeing the navigators and, um, interacting with providers in those lower counties. So I don't know if it's anything we would entertain, um.
So basically if. We brought them on to Buchanan County, we'd be more or less just their employer of record.
Yes.
But they would stay county employees and they wouldn't lose any of their time and position or anything like.
Right, we would be the employee, and that's with going to the single county of employment. Um, there's two counties that I know of, uh, Pope may do it too, but I know that Potawatomi and, um. Franklin County are both counties of. The, the employer of record for their disability access points. Franklin did it for their region also. So basically it's almost like the DAP is contracting for the HR and the. Um. Payroll is kind of what it would be, is that we're contracting for that because they would. Be serving, I mean, people are hired out of one county, but not necessarily even serving that county now with the disability access point. Uh, because we have somebody who's a Jones County employee that will be working out of this office. She's serving more. Um, Delaware and Dubuque, but the hub is this office. So things have changed so much that we're not. We're no longer really representing our county anymore. We're representing all fourteen counties, but still needing an employer for a year. And I don't know, you know, if Benton County doesn't sign it, um. It sounds like they would like to. They were concerned if, about. Some of the, I, I'm not sure because I wasn't part of it, but I think it was. Some of the language. It might have been regarding, I, I, I'm saying, cause I can't guess because I did not attend those two, those two meetings. Dubuque Counties is more. They said it in their public meeting, so I think I can say it here. They're in a lawsuit with the region over, um. Something, and so they didn't want to sign it for that reason, um, and.
That's why they had to change the language?
That's why they didn't want to sign it the way it was because they wanted, didn't want it to have any provisions about that.
I'm sorry, which county was this?
It was Dubuque.
Dubuque, Kissimmee.
Yep.
That's Delaware County side?
Delaware is not maintaining any employees. And the Jones County, um, auditor had reached out to Chris a while ago asking if we would take their employees too, which. At that point, we didn't want to discuss it because I was, we were meeting with Jones County trying to get them to keep the employees. I met with them twice and it, I, I offered. That they could remove the language of the twenty eighty, or even if they would agree to do it monthly until we could find something and. They just said that their attorney recommended that they not sign it and they wouldn't go against what their attorney recommended cause it kind of left them.
Well, I know that attorney.
unsupported.
I started on the board with them.
Yeah.
And I know, I'm, yeah. He has the same feelings he's, that I have. Regarding the whole. Everything's happened and. I had, there's just, there's a big mistrust there between.
There is, and that's a big thing is the distrust of HHS.
Yeah.
I just, I mean, I feel awful that these employees, whether it be Jones County or whatever county it is, are. Potentially losing, losing their jobs, especially with the years of service that these people have had. But I'm just not sure if this would be a good. I personally caught, would say it'd be fiscally irresponsible for the county to try and take this on.
I mean, I see it like as a pastor because we get paid for, we. Have to pay the wages out, but we're getting reimbursed or reimbursed ahead of time for those wages.
We have a week and we have no money to make payroll for these employees yet. And it has to come out of the general fund. And we're already trying to cut the tax levy on the general fund. We're limited to that. It's just, it's a horrible, horrible situation and I just hate to see Buchanan County get caught in the middle of it. That's just my opinion, right or wrong?
Is there work available for these three individuals?
Is there work available?
Yeah.
Yes.
Where would they work?
Um, one of them will be based out of, would be based out of here, the part-time one, one based out of Lynn County and one based out of Scott. Or Johnson.
And then you mentioned that the reimbursements and is there money in advance that's coming?
Supposed to be.
So we get the money July first. The DAP's supposed to get the money, well, the DAP actually has money. But we keep, don't have spending authority until July first.
So.
So.
Every indication that the money.
That the money will be coming.
I have got zero correspondence on that. The only information that has been available to me is me, what Julie shared.
That's right.
But she is the, you're the chief, you're the CEO of the DAP, right?
I'm the interim CEO for the few weeks, so I'm still getting on top of everything, but yes, Deb Guard, so Deb has not sent any correspondence.
And the other thing I think about with the counties with the, if these employees came on. I think about our health insurance. We are self-funded. God forbid if they come on our benefits and something. Yes, something catastrophic happened. Their goals are two point five million dollar fund. That covers all of our employees.
Which means.
So if they're gonna be working out of Scott, Lynn, Buchanan, why aren't those counties taking them on then?
Because the arrangement at the time was to make, for people to stay with their own counties for a year and then because we're. Not really serving a county, we're serving a district. We're serving the entire fourteen county district. So even if their office is here, it doesn't mean they're just serving Buchanan. They're serving multiple other counties. And so we're not acting as county-based anymore. It's district-based, and I think that. That the previous CEO didn't have any indication that. We would be facing this with counties, um. And just thought that it would. Would be okay, and we're finding out that. That, I mean, those discussions, in my opinion, should have happened. It just, things were happening so fast. I think that.
And just to clarify for Kevin's question. Although our people are based out of Buchanan County, they're serving Blackout County and Delaware.
Right.
So they've got clients that are gonna be in a three-county area.
Those, those people that. I mean, they're gonna keep them in Jones County, so Jones County won't have any.
We're still required to provide coverage for all fourteen counties. So there are not staff in every county. There's not funding enough to have offices and staff in every county. And we have that currently, but there isn't funding for that in the future, so, um. I mean, Jones County staff, in order to keep a job, is going to have to travel to the southern counties because we didn't have a position. And we lost, I think, twelve staff in the process. So.
I understand your reservations about Lynn County, but is there anything keeping us from allowing that, that employee? If they were to come to us to transfer to Scott County? And then just fall directly under them? Is there any limitation that would keep us from doing that?
Scott County has. Lot indicated they would hire new individuals, and there hasn't been a discussion with Scott County. It just, I found out last week that Jones County is not. So you were kind of the path of least resistance, um. Which I understand. I mean, I understand the reservations. I really do.
Positive indicators nor negative indicators at this point.
No, and it's hard to continue to have a new county take on an employee knowing in a year we're going to. A single county of employment. If, I mean, if we knew what that single county of employment was now, it would make sense to go that direction. Um, Lynn County had just agreed. Had, uh, they had reached out, so they were willing to take on additional things for the region. So then the CEO just worked with them to take on new people. Right. That there, so. There has been beginning discussions with Lynn of taking on, um, existing people. We have had those discussions. With the program manager, there's a potential that they could adjust salary some. Um, they have a little more leeway. With the disability service navigator, there is not, and their process takes. Quite a while to get through the process because. It, it's because they're so large, they have a very formal process. I mean, they have to. Do a new job opening and then it goes to the union and then it goes to another committee and then it goes to the board and then they post it. So timeframe, we would be looking at. Not having those staff for quite, quite a while, and one of them is. Helping us with the transition of all the clients, so we would just be taking on that extra once she's laid off.
What about the supervisory structure? I mean, do they, do they report to you? Who's their, their supervisor and then do you report to us? But you report to the DAP and you just happen to be our employee?
Actually have.
What if there's misconduct by the employees?
So the misconduct, have, have come back to us?
The, so. Um. This is the. The table of organization. Within the DAP, but the MOUs have language that the disability access point. Will assist with, um. Supervision of staff and can talk to the county board of supervisors with any concerns. Or like for the employment of staff. So when we had a staff in a county that was not performing up to expectation. The CEO spoke with that county's board of supervisors, so it's kind of, it's almost a dual. Coverage, so when you guys supervise me, the CEO supervised me. Because the county, there's still the county. But then there's the supervisory role in, within the DAP also. So the three would fall under, one would fall under the disability. Um, or the program manager south. And one under, um, and then the other two under those program managers, and they all would fall on my, under me. In two ways, I guess, since I'm interim.
I mean, it would DAP report us if we were to take on these three additional employees. Is, is the funding there? Are they supportive of this process?
Um. We have our board meeting on Thursday for whether they're supportive of the process, um. The funding is, I'm, from what I know, there's a check sitting. That's been deposited in Lynn County and others, others are coming. I'm not the fiscal agent, so, um.
Deb's a fiscal agent?
Mm-hmm. But she will have payments ready to go on. July first.
We just don't know what payment it is because we don't know how many staff we have, we're gonna have.
Well, there's payments been determined.
So we'll probably.
But it would have to be changed according to. And I, I have not been a part of that.
I would really love to be, but now I'm gonna take those people in as an employer of record. But when you start thinking of all the other liabilities that follow along in that process. I'm reluctant to put our county at that risk. Chris brings up a great one, just on the insurance portion.
We do have one more meeting before, uh, all the stuff kicks in, so, I mean, I hate to be the last minute here, but.
But we, if we do take on these employees, it takes time for us to set them up into the system. You've written out all the paperwork that has to be done, and we're seven days out. Well, you don't have to apologize. It's facts. I don't want, we have to pay overtime to my staff because of this.
Next Monday is month or year end.
Right. And we will be doing. Then the following Monday, I have to have, if this happens, all their information already set up so we can do payroll.
I don't think there's any way that it would occur, uh, July first, no matter what. I, yeah, I don't, I, I just don't see that it would happen, and you know, you may undermine July first.
Do we preempt this conversation, get everything supported and ready and so we make a decision Monday kind of conversation?
I, I don't think we're prepared to.
The question. To me, and tell me if I'm wrong, but because of the changes, because of the people that have left. The, the quality of care or the, I don't want to say the quality, it's gotta kind of go down, doesn't it? I mean, you know, you, you're, you're probably not gonna have as many people to service things the way they used to be, or as good as they used to be. Who's got the liability for that?
The state made the change in the media rail system to improve quality. Um. They feel that the new, the new way they have organized things will make it better. Um, we are tasked with covering anybody with a disability, no matter what the disability is. There's also the ASO, the Administrative Service Organization, which is based out of Des Moines and they, um. It's Iowa Primary Care Association, and they will be. Serving anybody with. A mental illness or, uh, an addictive disorder that's not considered chronic or like a disability. We will be serving the others.
But with the timing and the lack of people, I mean, I. I just don't see this being better, and it's just unfortunate that they've thrown all this on everybody. But who would have the liability? I mean, if, if, if we have somebody in Buchanan County that needs mental health. But yet our person is, is working with other people in a different county and that type of thing.
We've been working as a region and working with other counties for about eleven years. This is, this is a different format of it. Um, I can't say it will be better. I mean, HHS feels that the new system will be better. It's, the timeframe is very quick trying to get everything in place.
Are they timing better financially or are they timing better?
They say then.
Yeah.
People will be served better is what the state, why they organized it in this manner.
So again, the liability issue. So we can't get to somebody in Buchanan County and the worst.
I don't know that they're. I would think they were a Buchanan County employee and didn't get out to that visit. That's on Buchanan County.
If we recall, that there was negligence, but if it's a matter of, I mean, even when we. Based here, we wouldn't have twenty-four seven coverage. There are other avenues for people to. Um, yeah, and if there was negligence, I would say. Yeah, and if there was negligence, I would say could go back on the company, but if it was just a lack of. Having someone available, there are, there are other avenues of law enforcement liaison and hospitals and. Ambulance that need a lot of other avenues. Yeah.
But yeah, so you can look at the, not saying that it would ever happen, but you have to look at the overall picture. Like Julie just said, negligence.
But these people aren't gonna serve Buchanan County anyway.
It would still be a Buchanan County employee.
The region will cover liability insurance, but they would, if they're still employee here.
I'm sure a competent lawyer would find every avenue to go after if there was a problem.
Unfortunately, yes.
So if you're the employer of record, you are on the line. I, uh, this is a.
It's a sticky record.
And I get it. I mean, I'm. Just trying to do whatever I can to support the employees, but I certainly get the county's position. I mean, don't think I don't.
The right thing as a human being would be to take these employees on. That's the right thing as a human being.
I feel for them. I mean, they have what, a week? But it is what it is.
When they're, when they're gone, then your work is even greater, and you're already under, you're already working sixty to seventy hours a week.
It'll get better. It will. No, once July first is here, it. It'll get better.
Pull out the game theory. If we don't hire.
At that point, I mean, they would either, they could choose if Lynn County is willing to hire them, they could go that way, or they can look for other employment, and then we would have openings. Yes.
How many opens do we already have through Lynn County?
We offered three jobs last week. So the, the jobs that we're offering are all disability services navigators, because that's where we were short people. The administrative people are a lot of the ones that left. So we offered three last week, and we have one more to offer um, through Lynn County. So they'll have four new ones through there.
But to look back to what you said before. If those employees were not. Continued in the county they're currently in. And they had to apply somewhere else, they would be hired in at starting page versus their current.
Right, you don't get to keep their seniority.
And they wouldn't keep their benefits. I mean, they would be hired as a new employee in Lynn County, and we've talked with their HR to see if there's any way around that. For the disability services navigator, there is not because it's a union position, so they cannot do anything about that. For the management position. Uh, benefit wise, I don't know that there's anything they would do, but pay wise, they would maybe be able to bring her in. So they have like their pay scale, they might be able to bring her in, not at the first level for the management position. Um, because she is. Because she is not union. That management position would not be union.
So there is a process if we do nothing here.
If we do nothing here, we will work with Lynn County to see. Right. So the people that, the disability services navigators would have, the ones that we have, will have to pick up all of the individuals that those. Navigators had.
Until.
Until the positions are filled, right? Yep. The state has a limit of sixty per navigator during the transition process. We're supposed to have everybody in place July first. It's not going to happen. Um, so. Yeah, then we would be filling, excuse me, filling those positions if. If the staff choose not to. Choose not to. Apply through Lynn County, we would be hiring.
I just don't understand why the state just doesn't take you guys as employees.
I think the state wants to set the standards, but maybe don't want to employ. Because it's very much state.
But they are.
Mandated.
Because they're, they're passing all the wages, they're passing all of that down.
But they're not the employer of record. I don't, I don't know the reasoning.
Provide the benefits.
But they still are paying for the benefits.
Right. I, I don't know the, the reason, but. I don't know, they probably wouldn't have been able to get it in place this fast either. I, I honestly don't know why. Haven't had any discussions.
Where they can take credit for if it succeeds.
I have another quick question, just since it was recently brought to my attention, and I'm asking because I truly don't know. So are they gonna reimburse for like your workers' compensation insurance, or is that strictly going to be on the county?
No, they would reimburse for any payroll. I mean, up to this point, it's been paid. We've paid the workman's comp. The county should not be asked to, I mean, should not pay things that aren't reimbursed. And eventually, the plan is to try to get everything centralized as much as possible, except for the employment stuff. Yeah. But I know it's, it's been reimbursed up to this point.
Yeah, I know it had previously with the reason.
Yeah, it should still be. Really, you shouldn't see much difference, except that we're trying to standardize, like, instead of us each buying office supplies in order to be able to budget. You know, trying to standardize that, standardize the car insurance, all of that stuff to get it away from the counties.
I don't know, do nothing.
Will continue to pursue through Lynn.
Well, I would make the motion that we, that we adopt the employees. And make the human motion. You guys don't have a second if you don't, if you don't choose to, it's up. But we gotta get off of. We gotta move forward in some direction.
Is there a po- possibility or a probability that we would have greater service, better service to our, our community if we had those three positions here?
They would not be based out of here, so.
We, we're gonna be paying unemployment and county benefits. That's all it is.
And then after these people retire or move on, or whatever the source, but it's still our position to fill, it sounds like, or.
Disability access points position, and, and after a year, we're looking at the single county of employment. If a county will agree to pick it up.
So we would have these employees for a year.
Got a motion on the floor, we have a second? Oh, which one to die for a last second? I see what happens.
While I'm here.
Sorry, Julie.
Okay, I get it. Mom, while I'm here, can we talk office space again? So our plan is Friday and Monday to start moving. We'll put Patty in those. Two southern ones, one kind of a, more of a waiting area. We've never had those doors unlocked before. But I just wanna make sure that.
We don't know if they work.
Oh, no, 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 we, I, we've unlocked them. They, they've never been an open, an open door for security reasons, but. Um, Lyle and Ben have been looking for a door. They may have secured a door to close that off. And then we don't want, I mean, we want it to be completely separate, like we're two separate offices, so I just wanna make sure having that door open. And Patty's looking at getting some type of a sign to put. In the hallway, if that's okay, like, you know, one of the standing ones with a sign on it, kind of, is that our right to put in the hallway to direct people so that they're, okay? And then Tracy. Tracy is a judicial court advocate, so she is not part of the disability access point. She serves individuals who are on a mental health commitment. So ideally, she would not be located within the office for confidentiality reasons. Is there any other place?
Does she see people?
Not often, and so we talked about, is there something down? She used to be down in the secure area. And then they wanted her moved out of there, or we had the available room. Is it, could she move back there, and if she needs to see somebody, I told her she can use our. Would that be amenable?
Fine.
There's, yeah, there's, there's that one room that's, that empty office, it's big.
Which one?
Karen's old office.
Karen's old office.
Sheriff's office.
Down around the corner, the, the north, the northeast corner.
By the kitchen. Tell everybody you hit her with her.
Okay. And.
Maybe we could just let, let her know and say, look around and see what offices are available.
That's the only one that's empty down there.
Is that the only one empty? Okay, she's fine. Um, I mean, she'd rather stay with us, but she's fine going down there. And then payroll, she's no longer under me. She's directly under, and when I approved hers, time sheet today, it made me, and Patty won't be. So does Ashley change those, or who changes?
We need all the information. Ashley will have to change them. I, who's gonna be the direct supervisor?
That was discussed with, yeah, what, during this change or during budget time, it was like the board is. Because Patty's now the department head of GAVA, and Tracy will fall directly under the board.
Patty should probably be under us, but.
Tracy, at the time, we talked about being under you, but you can put her under somebody else if you want. The discussion was just, there wasn't really anybody else.
So, okay.
Not a good, a good fit.
So the, we.
This is the.
The issue.
Judicial advocate, or which one?
That's a mental health advocate.
Yeah, it's both. It's the judicial mental health advocate. Um, so. Concern with putting the individual under the county attorney is that sometimes they're on opposite sides. Because when the, when the person's attorney is discharged, she's appointed, and she might. Re- or not represent somebody, but she might do a petition to the court because the person wants off their commitment, and then the county attorney's office would disagree with that. Petition, so.
From my opinion, she needs to be directly under.
Okay, and she.
So, looks about all fine and dandy, but officially to make a decision on that, let's put it on the agenda for next week because it's not on agenda.
Yeah, it was just discussed during budget time, but yet probably never official, you're right. What about Patty? Is, does that officially need to? She was officially appointed, but who the supervisor is going to be?
Yeah, so they can be on. So it can be reflected into the minutes.
Just write a letter asking you to appoint the board for both of them. I will, I would do that.
Then there was some email discussions about your square footage and rent. Does that get you under that square footage to get you within the budget or your budget?
What is your budget for that?
Sixty, some odd hundred, sixty-three hundred or something like that.
No, the budget for the entire DAP for all administrative costs is like two twenty-nine, so. Yeah, I, we don't have a budget per individual office.
Does that, that includes the payroll?
That includes, depends on which day you ask. Does not include payroll of everybody, would include more the administrative payroll, and then.
So like you and Julie. I'm just trying to figure out what you're, what, okay, so they have the two hundred and twenty-nine budgeted for administrative. Once we take out payroll, the benefits.
That's for the, that's for the entire district. I know.
How do we get a payroll?
So the. That what they're saying administrative is more. If we're paying an IT person, or we're paying office space, the paper.
Administrative does not include payroll.
Not all of payroll. It would include payroll of a portion of like the CEOs. It's six percent of the total is what they're allowing for administrative, even though it's a completely different setup than it was. Like in others. And so at first, they said it would include more, and then they backed down and said that can be allocated. So a lot of like, like the, as the chief operating officer, my role will is more supervision of the. Disability service navigation part of it, that's not included the administrative, that's considered service. The old case management base, we used to have a certain percentage that was like the non-service part of it. So, I mean, we're looking at five hubs, and then also some landing places. So I knew that we couldn't want, have one hub be that high of a amount, we couldn't afford that high of an amount for one hub.
So I'm not hearing that we landed on rental fee at this point.
No, because basically the money in the budget that the state is giving them won't cover rent, so we are basically gonna house them for free.
It, well, yeah, I mean.
Very, very minimal.
Johnson Counties was like, well, yeah. I mean, we can look, if, we can certainly look other places for rentals and see what we can, and maybe get small. A small area and just share office space.
My personal feeling is it'd be the service to the. Residents of Buchanan County, move it out of the warehouse. Right, that's my personal.
I agree, but we still need to kind of look.
Yes, maybe one hundred percent with that job, but once they can, the county's getting a shaft. We really are.
Maybe you can take in residents out at the mental health. Lot of empty spaces out there.
Okay, John, you're being a little facetious now. I think the state's going to give them a deal on rent. I got it.
The state likes to hand out a lot of, um, behind the scenes unfunded mandates, and this is another one.
I think I just put a list in your Drisy's box.
So we, we had paid indirect costs to the county since while we'd been a region, when, what was it, a year, like twenty-six?
Twenty-six thousand.
Based on the.
And that would include.
That included.
Electrical, you know, like your basically utilities, and I think that included internet. You guys paid your own phones.
Yeah, because internet's not built separately, is it?
No, it's not.
So we paid phones, and then it also would include.
Office space. But even if we went with that indirect cost of what they have been paying, we're being told that she doesn't have that in her budget.
I, I, I mean, we are gonna have to find it. We, I just think sixty thousand, we couldn't sustain. I don't know, Johnson Counties was twelve thousand something. I've not, we've not heard back from Lynn. Scott County is going to be about a thousand a month, I think, but their office space is much smaller. Um, and we're looking for someplace else there, because for one office space to pay a thousand a month was. We're gonna try to share with like AAA there. And then Blackhawk County AAA has a provision where we can do like ninety dollars a month for a shared office space. Because it's not a permanent office space. That's a landing spot where people are gonna spend time and have walk-ins. Yeah, we're trying to find landing spots in all fourteen counties, well, all nine of the non, non-hub places, so.
Yeah, see, we're gonna leave you out on a limb, but if you don't mind looking at other options, right, looking at your options, I guess.
Looking at other options, where else we might.
Just to see how much we are losing out on.
I'm a little hesitant, honestly, to. To base us at MHI just because of the. Not, well, we're trying to get away from stigma, but I think people think of MHI as a long term, you know, like. But if we advertise it enough, I think, I guess people go out there for woke rehab, so if we could be maybe in one of the outer areas, it's possible.
I prefer that you stay here.
I mean, I can certainly look at if MHI has any rental space.
Gee, we could also put you where the, the AAA is, NI three A, our other building.
Senior summer?
So the good starting point is actually finding out what the state is going to allow her to pay for this type of expenditure.
Right, I think they have, they're not that specific in what they'll allow. It's up to the disability access point, the governing board, what their.
So what do you currently pay?
I think it's, I think it's like twenty-six. And this was what my memory serves me.
I, I don't have access to that one. I think it was around twenty-five to twenty-seven thousand, somewhere in a year. It's what the region would reimburse us for indirect costs.
So if you take, and you're taking a third of the office space away.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we take twenty-six thousand divided by three. And multiply by two. Could they afford eighteen?
I'm sure, yes.
That seems like the most logical way to do this.
If the board's amenable.
Try and make a bunch of money.
Just get reimbursed.
Make money off it, but do you want, you do want to cover your costs.
Right.
Right. We settle on eighteen?
Does, does it have to be in agenda item?
Probably.
Put it on for next Monday.
Put it on next Monday. Put it on next Monday. You're making Christmas a day.
Gotta be done by three o'clock coming next Monday to.
Okay, so I, I will send letters. I will send letters for, um, and we'll start the movement process on Friday. We usually just do our own, so. We'll get it all as much as you can.
While Ben did get the door up.
Not yet. While located one, he wanted to make sure he had permission, it put it up, and I said it was discussed at the board meeting, but he could reach out and ask.
He just wanted to ask for forgiveness and not permission.
We need to empower him more, I don't know.
Can we tell him it's okay to put the door up?
Please.
And then questions, everyone.
Thank you, guys. Very much for your time.
Okay. Public comments.
How's it going, Mr. Robinson?
Not too bad.
So you'll get to see you on it Monday.
Just want to hand out an email that was sent to me. For my zoning administrator. On Friday. As I read through it. I've got on the zoning board, I guess the longest tenure of all of them. And, uh, have never been in this situation before. Almost wondering if this email is going beyond. One single person's control of board supervisors. Um, transparency has always been a big thing with me. When I was chairman of the zoning board, um, trying to be transparent with everyone. Along with all of our members. In a, in this situation, I think perhaps. Something should be put on the agenda to consider a personal request by either one of you three. To a group of zoning members to maybe perhaps change the outcome of a vote that was already included. Or clarify things a little bit more.
Sure, I'll respond to that, actually. So what you're referring is to my letter to planning and zoning board, whereas, uh, we turned down a, a zoning change request in the past. And I think the question, or the, the, the statements that.
I, I'm gonna put a. Oh, silence on this one. I think we need to make this a agenda item for discussion.
I don't.
If there's gonna be any type of discussion between any one of you regarding this, it needs to be on the agenda. Mister Robinson can address.
I just asked for it.
Yes, but in a public comment, i- if it's not an agenda item, we cannot respond or take action on.
We constantly take responses to public comments.
But we don't respond with actions.
Well, I agree.
We're doing. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to be diplomatic here, but it needs to be an agenda item.
For you three to discuss.
Do you mind if I respond to it? You're trying to shut me down for that.
Take your best shot, so.
So, uh, the zoning request that was changed, uh, both of you had identified that, uh. You were following suit, you were following what, what was done in the past. And my response to the zoning board was maybe we need to look and, and change to see if there is some other stipulation that, uh, does allow an individual to. To follow through with this. Maybe there is, maybe this does need to be changed.
But that would change the whole compensation plan without people again, because that's what the zoning commission goes off of. Comprehensive plan, excuse me.
Page four, page four of that handout I just handed, telling you, handing you, perhaps. Perhaps reading.
You do have a copy of the land use, correct?
I'm not sure I have one available, but I'll, I'll look for it.
It's online. It's on the website.
Then it's available on the, online, yeah.
And you should read it.
Okay.
We have always followed what that book provides. To the best of my knowledge. I mean, we provide facts to the three of you. Before your tenure, whatever, we have always provided facts. We can't verify or true from the public, but we got them. What's in that zoning ordinance or comprehensive use plan is what we have to follow. And to make a special exception for a situation where there was other options for that family to choose from. But they decided not to. I personally asked the question. Do the applicant. And they denied doing. They did not wanna own the farm. They wanted to own a parcel. There are other options there. So trying to school us that we weren't doing our job, I felt, I feel offended by, to be honest with you.
Well, how do you feel about the number of?
On that email, it was drafted to the zoning board members, to Amber, to Cody. I see nothing of John or Dawn on that email.
Are you familiar with open meetings laws?
Sure.
Okay.
You don't care to share that information with your other two colleagues?
That would be a violation of open meetings.
Noah would not. You're sharing information. You're not asking for opinion or anything else. You're sharing information, and that's perfectly allowed. You go up to the county attorney's office and they'll tell you the same thing.
I shared my opinion, which is different. So, are you familiar with the number of small farmers and the, the population that we've lost of small? Yeah, are, are you familiar that we've, we're losing our small farmer counts?
Yes.
Yeah.
Seven of the nine that are on the planning and zoning board are farmers, are farmers.
Just then, I don't dispute that.
Okay.
So how do we, how do we gain back our small farmers? How do we do that? That's the point of my question.
Buy a small farm. I acreage, so.
Forty acres, you can do it.
Yeah.
Forty acres, yeah, that's.
Hey, that's a small farm.
That's a small farm, yes, I agree.
Two acres is not a farm.
A small farm?
No, does, does two acres?
That's not a farm.
Have the right to control three hundred and sixty acres around it? Let me ask you that question.
Uh, that would limit, I, I mean, this sounds like a hypothetical conversation.
No, I'm, I'm just asking a simple question. Does somebody that owns two acres or three acres have the right to control the three hundred and sixty acres around them?
What would that have to do with anyone's else's property?
It happens.
Uh, how does this pertain to this conversation, please?
It, it, it comes down to the facts of the matter of trying to parcel things off. We have never denied a land split with an existing acreage. This here was new construction on ninety C S R dirt.
Well, they should be able to make a pretty good garden out of that.
They can make a good garden in town.
So every gardener is in.
They're buckets.
They have more land than just buckets.
True.
So every gardener that is in town has become a farmer. I had a garden in town.
Clearly not, because they can't move to the country.
I have a garden in town.
No, I mean, so are you staying in this thing? The first thing I thought of was, oh, so if you have. You wanna have a garden, you have to move to the country. I'm like, you can have a garden in town.
Absolutely.
Yep. So then do I become a farmer?
That is the question, yes, ma'am. How do we encourage our small farmers?
I mean.
I think if we're going to continue this discussion, it needs to be an agenda item and put on the agenda for future. I, I don't see where we can make any determination at this point. Without having official agenda discussion on it.
I don't have any other responses to you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other, uh, public comments?
Brought this up before. Basically opens up what I thought. There needs to be some training with the supervisors. And one, you, you know, you asked him. Open meetings laws, and I, I, I. I wasn't probably advocating for thirty-four years, but meeting laws is no different than what you got now. I don't think you get the whole idea and understand what it is.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I really do. And I mentioned that to you before, and again, there we go. The atmosphere in here is.
Toxic.
Toxic. And it wasn't that way. Not that I'm attacking you, but it wasn't that way before you started.
I understand, thank you.
Some people seem to be proud of toxic environments they create.
Who's that?
Anyone else, public comment, please? Chris, you got anything else? Linda, welcome. I haven't seen you for a while.
I'm signing out of mind. Boston Cemetery. Road construction. Do you have any idea how we do a funeral?
Good question. It's currently open, right?
It's, it was open this morning.
Yeah.
But, um. I don't, I have a funeral scheduled for Saturday.
Okay.
And I don't know.
Worth progress.
Or the, yeah, and is there a way that we can be notified, so? And then the lawn lawn guys should be there today and tomorrow.
Right. Who should be the point of contact? Would that be you or who else? Okay. Um, let me.
So the, the debt, the culvert that they're gonna start working on here in the next few days, that's just south of, of our cemetery. So that'll get you at least to Independence, but south of there, coming up from Kwaski becomes, comes the issue for you.
I, yeah, and I am only concerned about access to the cemetery itself. That's the only thing that. Right, the only thing that concerns us is get, getting into.
Oh, during the construction and all that, yes, ma'am. Okay, yeah. You got to Alex, I guess, since Brian's off.
My own issue. Linda, can I get your, uh. Email and.
Linda Walt Hart. Gmail. Five six three, nine two zero, three zero seven six.
I will have, um. Somebody from the county street, or the groups department, contact you.
Just so we have a.
Dialogue.
Yeah, cuz if I get a phone call, I'm not gonna know. If this, yes, we can, or no, we can't.
Yeah. I know they're gonna try and minimize how long they have to close.
Certainly.
Especially.
They all, sure, I get that.
And, uh, I think they're still working Kramer's place right now, working on that culvert.
There was a guy in the theater putting off stakes this morning. Hey, just, oh, we have ideas.
Yeah, I will, uh, contact them and make sure you're on the location unless it's haste. Something changes or as they progress.
And I have no way of knowing, you know, I was just praying we wouldn't have any. Funny.
That doesn't always work.
No, got a lady coming in from Wyoming. She died out there. That's sad. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda.
Thanks, Linda.
Okay, anyone else? How do I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So, second.
All favor.